Good evening, everyone. It's time to call to order this October 3, 2017, meeting of the Gallatin City Council. We'll begin this meeting, as we do each meeting, with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Mayberry is going to lead us in the invocation, and then Vice Mayor Overton is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd stand with me, please.
(Inaudible) Father, we come before you, for honor, grace, giving you praise and the honor of glory for being our God and our King. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight with heavy hearts, on those who've lost lives in Las Vegas. Heavenly Father, we ask you to comfort their families. Have those, Heavenly Father, who are giving encouragement to them, those, Heavenly Father, down in Puerto Rico, Texas, and all places, Heavenly Father, that have had tragedies, Heavenly Father, beyond our expectations or our understanding. We thank the Heavenly Father for the community that we live in, the blessings that you've given each and every one of us, Heavenly Father, and we ask you to continue those. Give us, Heavenly Father, good sense, common sense, Heavenly Father, and our deliberations of the evening, all these things we ask and pray in the blessed name of Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
(Inaudible)
Thank you, Councilman Mayberry, for your prayer. I know that the thoughts and prayers of all of our city are with the victims and the families and friends of those victims in Las Vegas and with those experiencing other hardships around our world, so I thank you all for that. With that, I'll ask Ms. Kettrell to call the roll, please. Vice Mayor Overton?
Present.
Mr. Alexander?
Present.
Mr. Camp?
Present.
Mr. Fennell?
Here.
Mr. Hayes?
Here.
Ms. Love?
Here.
Mr. Mayberry?
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum. Thank you. There are no minutes for your approval this evening, so we'll move on to public recognition. Now is the time of the meeting for public recognition on agenda-related items. There will be public recognition on non-agenda-related items at the end of the meeting, and there also is a public hearing this evening on the master development plan and the rezoning for Long Hall of Baptist Church. That's the first item on the agenda, so if you want to speak to that, you may wish to hold your comments until that public hearing. Otherwise, if there's an item on the agenda tonight that you would like to address, we ask that you come forward at this time and do so. Just introduce yourself and give us your address, please. So, public recognition on agenda-related items is now open. Now, I see no one indicating that they wish to speak, so I will declare public recognition on agenda-related items closed. That brings us to Mayor's comments, and I do have several center stage to join me at the podium. Do you want y'all line up there so everybody can see you, and then I'll come over there for a photo, and I'll read the proclamation from here. Is that okay? And, Council, if y'all want to come stand with him, you're welcome to, too. I think they probably like that a lot. This is a proclamation by the mayor from the city of Gallatin, and it says, "Whereas Center Stage Performing Arts Academy is located in Gallatin, Tennessee, and whereas the academy has been in operation for seventeen years and offers high-quality education in the arts, including dance, music, and theater, and whereas Center Stage currently has over two hundred students enrolled in their classes, and whereas the academy will be bringing a group of thirteen dancers and parents to Dance Excellence, an international dance festival in Los Angeles, California, and representing the state of Tennessee, and whereas from April 1st to April 9th in 2018, Center Stage students will be learning all styles of dance with industry professionals, including auditioning, musical theater, and film classes, and whereas Dance Excellence is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity experience where students can join others from around the world to celebrate the art of dance." I, Paige Brown, Mayor of the city of Gallatin, do hereby recognize Center Stage Performing Arts Academy for the integral role it has played in the middle Tennessee arts community, and I encourage the citizens to support individuals in the area of dance, music, and theater. And to this, I set my hand on this third day of October 2017. Congratulations to you all, and I assume that you are the ladies who are going to be going to Los Angeles. So, congratulations to you all. All right. I do have some things I want to mention to you all. First, last week, I told you about the announcement from Reader's Digest, and we received notification, I believe, yesterday, that in consideration of the victims of the Las Vegas tragedy, that they are going to postpone that announcement. It is now scheduled for next Wednesday, October 11th, at 9:00 a.m. And so, this is going to be a very exciting announcement. The public is welcome to attend. We're going to do it right outside City Hall in the front, weather permitting. If weather does not permit, we'll find an alternate location, but I hope it's going to be a beautiful day. This Saturday is the annual Main Street Festival. We're going to have big crowds in Gallatin for that. That evening is the Twenty-First Annual Candlelight Cemetery Tour. On Sunday is the National Firefighters Memorial Day. There's also going to be a community revival Sunday night at 4:00 p.m. I mentioned the Reader's Digest's announcement next week. On the 14th of October, which is a Saturday, is the scenic Sumner County Fall Ride for Food benefiting the Sumner County Food Bank and organized by special guest this evening and most city council evenings, Mr. Homer Bradley. It's also the Unity Day Block Party at First Baptist Church. It's also the day that Beretta is going to have their annual sale open to the public. That's going to be from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Civic Center. We'll have another cruise in downtown Gallatin in the City Hall parking lot, and then the NAACP Freedom Fund banquet is that night. Also, I want to mention that our two longest-serving department heads both have birthdays this month. Mr. David Gregory's is Thursday, and Mr. David Brown's is on the 18th of October, so be sure and wish them a happy birthday. So, I think that's all that I have for Mayor's comments, and we will move to the regular agenda. The first item on the agenda is the public hearing on ordinance number 0170-9-72, and for that, Councilwoman Love is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing on ordinance number 017... No, I'm sorry. 01709-72, and ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Sumner County, rezoning a 23.40-plus-or-minus acre parcel from the OR Office Residential District to the MRO Multiple Residential and Office District, and approving a preliminary master development plan for Long Hall of Baptist Church, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This is public hearing.
Okay. Public hearing is now open. If you wish to speak in this public hearing, you may come forward at this time. Just ask that you introduce yourself and give us your address, please.
Mayor Brown and council members. I'm Dr. Frederick Frank. I live at 1061 Highway 25 here in Gallatin. Actually, we're the last place, right before the 109 bypass, so we're really closest, I believe, to the property that's to be developed. We don't have a problem as far as the church and so forth. I guess some of the things that we would want to know would be, number one, there is a consideration with drainage, that when we get a heavy rain, that will go actually from the direction of that property, running towards the town of Gallatin. We actually, when we moved in back in 1983, we had somebody that could follow a grade and lay agricultural drainage towel because it would get so wet at times, but basically, it runs across, and ours was tilted to carry that water through a culvert that runs under the drive going towards our pasture. Where the neighbor's property goes on the other side, they have a smaller culvert, and it actually is angled sort of in the opposite direction where it blocks flow, and it causes a backup. I don't know with development of, you know, the land over there, when paving goes in and other buildings come in, that would cause a greater water problem. That was one of the things that we were concerned with. I'm here with my wife, in pink, Dr. Joanne Loriker, Frank. So, that was one of the concerns, I guess, that we would have with it, and, of course, what other types of properties besides the church would be developed. I guess we're concerned as far as things like apartment buildings and things like that, not knowing, you know, suddenly you have lots of people coming into the area. It's been very quiet and nice for, you know, for years, and I guess we're concerned with that because we do travel a good bit, and, you know, we want to be good neighbors to whoever comes in, if it's, you know, professional buildings and things like that. And I guess the next thing, and last really, that we were concerned, is how that would affect as far as property values. I'm really, I don't know much when it comes to the effects of development on our property as well as other properties in the area. So, if it's possible that the folks that are drawing this up could address that, we'd be deeply appreciative. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you for your comments. I'm going to, if you don't mind, if you would leave your phone number with... Okay, you're the easiest one to point out the table, the gentleman in the orange shirt. If you'd leave a phone number, there are a couple of department heads that I think can share with you the plan reviews, if you've not seen them online, and the comments related to that, and can probably answer your questions. One would be Bill McCord, our planning director. The other would be Nick Tuttle, the gentleman in orange that you're giving your number to, who can help with the stormwater questions, and I think that would probably help you understand more. And, of course, this is going to go to second reading at the next council meeting, which is actually, I guess, in two weeks? Two weeks. And so, you can come back and bring up any issues that you may still have if they're not satisfied with that, and, of course, you know, you may call any of us as well, too.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it.
Our pleasure. Thank you. Vice Mayor Overton? Oh, okay. I thought somebody turned the microphone on, wanted to speak.
Good evening. As you can tell, I'm not a Southerner. I don't talk right. However, I do have concerns with the amount...
Give us your name and address, please.
I'm sorry.
You're okay.
Marilyn Dagert, 149 Summerlin Drive. I have not been here that long, but long enough to get somewhat the lay of the land. I do agree with the drainage issues. The other issues I have with a church of this size... The churches are very active here, and that's understandable. I appreciate that. But as a resident near where all of this activity is, I want to know what's going to be done for noise. If it's a church with fifteen hundred permissioners, let's assume three hundred and fifty, four hundred cars per service. That's probably a little high. Assume three services per Sunday morning. That doesn't include choir practice, ladies groups, dinners, youth groups, the other things that happen, nursery schools and what have you. Well, my deed says the right to quiet enjoyment. On a Sunday morning, should I choose not to attend services, I'm going to be hearing an awful lot of yelling across the parking lot. I'm going to hear cars revving. I'm going to hear doors slamming. There goes my quiet enjoyment. Quite frankly, I don't think that's fair. However, there are things that can be done. I would like to know how all of this traffic is going to be routed. Is it all going to go on 25? Is it all going to go on 109? Or is it going to go on Summerlin? And that being the case, there are young children. What's being done for their safety? I think these are valid concerns as a parent and a grandparent. I think that's valid for anyone to consider. I have nothing against a church, but I do have something against my warranty deed being violated. Thank you.
Ms. Dagert, again, I'm going to ask that Mr. McCord help you out, and he may be able to do it this evening or tomorrow, but there are planning documents that would address things like buffering and the questions you had about the traffic routing, too, so...
Good, because I was promised buffering on 109. I'm still waiting.[928.49][928.49](Laughter).
Thank you.
Did you hear the gentleman?
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this public hearing tonight? I see no one else indicating they wish to speak, so I'll declare the public hearing on ordinance number 01709-72 closed. Item number two is second reading on ordinance number 01709-73, Vice Mayor Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance awarded bid and authorized funds in a total amount of $2,600,000 from water sewer 2015 bond sales for Bull's Creek Pump Station Improvements Contract 116, 2017, and I so move.
Okay. Motion by Vice Mayor Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is second reading on ordinance number 01709-73. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Does pass unanimously. Item three is second reading on ordinance number 01709-74, Vice Mayor Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance awarding bid and authorized funds in a total amount of $2,835,000 from water and sewer 2015 bond funds and water and sewer reserves for Bull's Creek Forest Main Improvements Contract 216, 2017, and I so move.
Motion by Vice Mayor Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance number 01709-74. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item four is second reading on ordinance number 01709-75, Councilman Fennell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating funds for 2016, 2017 carryover capital projects. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilwoman Love. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is second reading on ordinance number 01709-75. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Does pass unanimously. Item five is second reading on ordinance number 01709-76, Councilman Mayberry.
Yes, ma'am. This is an ordinance appropriating $191,950 for a state of Tennessee economic development site grant. Of that $191,950, $95,975 is coming from a state economic development grant with the state of Tennessee, and $95,975 is coming from the EDA-designated fund balance. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Mayberry, second by Councilwoman Love. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is second reading on ordinance number 01709-76. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. Item six is second reading on ordinance number 01709-77, Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the ordinance number 01709-77, order appropriating a $25,000 donation from the Tennessee Valley Authority to the Gallatin Economic Development Agency, and I so move.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Vice Mayor Overton. Any discussion on this? This is second reading on ordinance number 01709-77. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. Item seven is second reading on ordinance number 01709-78, and Councilman Hayes is recognized.
Yes, this is an ordinance appropriating a $7,500 donation from the Tennessee Valley Authority to the Gallatin Economic Development Agency. Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance number 01709... Or 09-78. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Item eight is ordinance number 01709-79, Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Paige. This is an ordinance appropriating $7,500 for the first annual firefighters' recognition banquet, with money coming from donations from businesses, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Hayes. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is second reading on ordinance number 01709-79. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item nine is second reading on ordinance number 01709-80, Councilman Camp.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance submitted to Gallatin Municipal Code, Chapter 13, Article 3, the Pension Trust Plan. So moved.
Motion by Councilman Camp, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance number 01709-80. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Item 10 is first reading on ordinance number 01710-81, Councilman Mayberry.
Yes, this is an ordinance appropriating additional funds in the amount of $64,025 for the 2012, 2013 home grant program. Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Mayberry, second by Vice Mayor Overton, and we are very grateful for these additional funds. Is there any discussion? Okay. This is first reading on ordinance number 01710-81. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Passes unanimously. Item 11 is first reading on ordinance number 01710-82, Councilman Fennell.
Yes, this is an ordinance to amend the city of Gallatin, Tennessee municipal code, Article 4, Section 10-100, Number 4, noise standards. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilman Alexander, and just to be clear, this is only for... We're not changing noise ordinance like we did a few years ago drastically. It's just in very specific instances when a generator needs to be used. So, any further discussion? Okay. This is first reading on ordinance number 01710-82. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Item 12 is Resolution R1709-48. Councilman Camp.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution reassigning the fire prevention from the fire department to the building code department. So moved.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Camp, second by Vice Mayor Overton. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is Resolution R1709-48. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Passes unanimously. Item 13 is Resolution R1710-50, Councilman Hayes.
Yes, this is a resolution approving an updated consultant selection policy for city of Gallatin projects funded in whole or in part with funds provided by the Federal Highway Administration or the Tennessee Department of Transportation. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? All right. This is Resolution R1710-50. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. Item 14 is Resolution R1710-51, Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor. This is resolution appointing Rosemary Bates, William McCord, Nick Tuttle, and Zach Wilkinson as committee members of the Consultant Evaluation Committee, as required by the Tennessee Department of Transportation, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Fennell. Any discussion? This is Resolution R1710-51. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Item 15, Resolution R1710-52, and Councilman Alexander, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution to amend the Gallatin personnel rules and regulations, vacation and leave, and I so move.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilwoman Love. Any discussion on this? Okay. This is Resolution R1710-52. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. Item 16, Resolution R1710-53, Councilman Mayberry.
This is a resolution appointing Tim Wakely as deputy building and electrical official. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Mayberry, second by Vice Mayor Overton. Is there any discussion? This is Resolution R1710-53. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. Item 17, R1710-54, Councilman Fennell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution approving a waiver of an annexation, comprehensive plan, amendment, and rezoning application fees. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion on this? Okay. This is Resolution R1710-54. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. And item 18, Resolution R1710-55, Vice Mayor Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution approving waiver for the site plan review and surety review application fees and approving a waiver from providing the required surety for the city of Gallatin Franklin House. I so move.
Okay. Motion by Vice Mayor Overton, second by Councilwoman Love. Is there any discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Passes unanimously, and I do believe that we got through an 18-item agenda in record time. Wow, y'all! But that does conclude the regular agenda, and it brings us now to other business. So, if there's any other business to come before this council or from this council, now would be the time to do so.
Mayor, didn't our GNRC, didn't our economic development and maybe our Parks Park, didn't they win something? We hadn't heard anything about it, and it wasn't in his... In our update this week, so...
That's my fault. That is my fault. I did get it on Facebook, however, but yes, and I actually, I haven't even given EDA theirs. That's how behind we are right now. But it's been a little crazy of a week.
Did they win?
Well, Parks and Recreation was recognized for their swimming pool, of course, and the great attendance it's had this year, and then the Economic Development Agency was recognized for the branding campaign.
The branding.
So, that was two greater Nashville Regional Council recognition, and I think the EDA one is in my office, so I need to... I haven't even gotten it to them, so... But yes, we will bring it and share it, and I will make sure Jeff gets that information and get it in the next news clips and in the newsletter. Any other other business?
I'd like to ask... Go ahead, John. I'm sorry.
Just want to call Zach to the stand.[1611.13][1611.13](Laughter). I don't know why I said stand. I'm sorry, Zach. To the podium, I'm sorry.
Got me nervous.
I'm sorry, Zach.[1620.47][1620.47](Laughter).
He might feel like he's on trial.
I have a lady that lived at 404 Demond Street, Ms. Aliva McMurray, says she had a water issue that you all had been working on, supposed to be coming back. Are you familiar with that?
Familiar with the address. I'm not sure what's going on there.
Okay. If you would, check that out for me. And also, the work that you all did at 765 Anthony Street was outstanding.
Good.
Amazing.
Good to hear.
And the lady that lived next door, Desi Catering Service, she's got a drainage issue also. I think when it rains real heavy, it kind of floods into her house, and I think all it needs is that ditch just dug out.
Okay. We'll take a look at it.
But thank you for outstanding job. Appreciate you.
Yes, sir. I'll pass it on.
Okay. 780. It's not mine.
Councilman Fennell, did you have something?
Discuss the car show as far...
We're just waiting on to bring the petition back, Sean. That's all. They got the petition getting signed.
Right.
We've already proved that they just got to get it back with all the signatures and stuff, and it's a done deal.
Yeah. We approved it at the work session, and we can approve that road closure at the end of sessions.
Okay.
So, we're waiting on that, though.
Anything else from this council? I do see our building official indicating that he has an issue of concern to bring to you all.
Chuck Stewart, building official. I'd like to speak about Resolution R1709-48, which is the reassigning of the Fire Prevention Division. Normally, when I come to this council and bring something to you, like a code change or a fee schedule or something, I ask you to give me sixty days to notify the public to get everything done. But I think that on this particular resolution, due to, I won't say miscommunication, but[1745.66] But I think that on this particular resolution, due to, I won't say miscommunication, but uncommunication on my part, probably, I think that Chief Williams is expecting these guys to come to me tomorrow morning, and there's still a lot of things to be done. Can we handle it? As I told him before the meeting, yeah, I can handle it, but I'm going to be jammed up a little bit here. I intended to come back to this podium tonight to speak about vehicles, but I think probably the vehicle has been settled now.
Well, may I interrupt you? I'm sorry, it actually hasn't, because we're waiting on an answer from the state about the ability to even transfer those, one of the vehicles. So we don't, we don't even know the status of those yet.
I had asked J.R. Smith to take a look and see what the state had vehicle-wise out there available now. They come and go where they have good vehicles or don't have them. So by myself not communicating with Chief Williams, what I normally would do in this situation, I think is expedite the process. So with your indulgence, we will try to get this done tomorrow morning, and still manage to handle our inspections and everything we're going to do. They may have to stand up upstairs to come in the office, but we have things that finance would be asked to do for us, and we have some, several items that have to be taken care of before we do a completion here. So I apologize to the mayor and his council for me not getting the communication out there of what the intentions truly were. Thank you.
Well, and we will have to navigate some things as we go, but, and we still have to do code changes as well. But Mr. Stewart, I appreciate that, and I actually think you've been fabulous to work with, so.
I appreciate it.
Nothing, nothing is ever really smooth when you're making changes, is it? Anyone else? Anything else?
As a follow-up on that, with the two, and I voted for this and I support 100%, with the two coming from the fire department to the code department here at City Hall, this is not going to create two new positions to be filled at the police, at the fire department, is it?
Correct.
Correct, okay. So it's a, it's a neutral, if you will.
Now, I bet Chief Williams would love for it to, but no.
But it's not. Okay, I just want to clarify that from last Tuesday night, okay? Which I was understanding there. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right, let's move forward on to public recognition on non-agenda-related items. It's the time of the meeting. If there's an item not on this evening's agenda that you'd like to address, this is your moment. Mr. DeBoer, I see you making movement over there. Are you coming forward or just getting comfortable?
Oh, no. I like to work hard. Oh, no. He got it over on him though. Oh, no. He got it over on him though. We never care. Oh, yeah. You get ready for Santa Claus, you give me. Santa Claus is coming early this year. My name is Joe DeBoer, and I live at 1007 Hart Street here in Gallatin, Tennessee. I have about five issues I'd like to share with you folks tonight. First issue happens to be the Stratom Club is looking forward to another year of another tractor pull next year on the third Saturday in September, and we're looking forward to the opportunity that brings us to have people come in and enjoy our neighborhood and burn a little diesel fuel and create a little smoke and raise a little money for some folks that won't have a Christmas and/or people that need to have some hearing help. And if anybody knows, if anybody has a problem with a hearing aid, that type of thing, let us know at the Stratom Club, and we'd be happy to work with those folks ASAP. Second issue is, I've got something here for a fine feller. This fine feller is notorious for playing cow pasture pool. Notorious. And when you play cow pasture pool, you have to have the proper, proper wear. So if Mr. David Brown would step up here, I got something for him. There, you come out on up here.
I'm on it, still up there with you, Joe.
Now, here's the deal. I know Mr. Brown here wants to look clean and nice at all times, just like he is right now, but he every once in a while has to slip down in a ditch. This is something you can put over them bare things. Yeah, okay. And you can step down over top of that and put it in that, now, there's another catch to that, too. One of them has got a little tire about right here at the leg. What you can do there is you chop that thing off, and you have a wonderful set of party pants. Wonderful set of party pants. You sit back in that big easy chair with that cigar, and you be in like Fleming.
Okay, let's keep it.
Where's my cigar?
Gentlemen, let's stay appropriate to the business of a city council meeting, I'll
remind you.
Can I accept this gift?
You may.
You better accept that gift.
Actually, I should leave that to the city.
And we appreciate David's help with regard to the tractor pull, the various activities that Lions Club does. He's helped us out a whole lot, and we appreciate David for that. Next, I've got to make another presentation. Mr. Fenton, come forward, please. Now, Mr. Fenton is notorious for giving people lifesavers. Notorious. So we feel like that the public ought to help him out with his lifesaver campaign, because that way he can go out there and have a nice date with those people that are coming to visit us and maybe do a little business in our community. So with that, we thank you for your work, Brother Fenton.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Now, the final thing I want to talk about, the major thing I want to step up here at the podium for is we have a major issue in our city, and that has to do with the widening of our streets to acceptable levels. I've been to this podium many times because our city streets are not up to snuff the majority. Any seat that's 17 feet wide is not wide enough to handle the traffic that we have today. And because of that, we're going to have what they call a guided discovery, like they say in the Boy Scouts, or show and tell time, like they say at school. Approximately a week from tomorrow, two weeks from tomorrow, there's going to be an opportunity for our communications director being out his camera and for Mr. Cross to bring out his camera to see exactly what we're speaking of. We have equipment in our city that is too wide for one side of that 17-foot street.
Mr. DeBoer, I hate to interrupt, but your five minutes is up, so this council needs to vote to extend if they so desire.
Most to extend.
Okay, motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. You may proceed.
Well, thank you, but I figure that, Mayor, I would suggest to you, that you and your council, if a person comes up with more than one issue, that should be five minutes per issue. So I'll leave it with that. Now, now, I'm not here long, because Mama's waiting for me at the house, okay? The reason why we want to do that is to show that we do have an issue. And my suggestion to this august body is this. Number one, we've been watching pretty close the money coming in and going out with our city. We have approximately a couple of million dollars that we have that's carryover from last year that we can put in a quote-unquote parentheses hold form for next spring. We will also watch to see how much more money we're going to get in our taxes on property coming up by, in, by February. We will look at that figure and see if we're gaining anything as far as more property tax. And the reason why we're going to have more property tax is because of property values will be going up. I would point, reference College Street Program. That's outstanding work that the folks did out there, but here's the catch. Mr. Ralph McDonald over there, he's trying to sell his property. And by doing what you did over there, that enhances the value of his property. Therefore, we should see, as we go along, more, more property value, and therefore we ought to be able to recoup a little bit more tax. Now, that's a good thing, and we want to make sure that's rolled right into our city so therefore other, our other parts of our city have opportunity for the wide streets, so we don't have a problem with the big trucks and so forth. Now, I have a piece of equipment that's 104-wide. The city has a trash truck that is at least that wide or better. And what I propose on the next two weeks from tomorrow is that we're going to pull up there at 1007 Hart Street about 2:00, 2:00, let's see, about 12:00, 1:00 in the afternoon, whenever the trash truck comes through, because we don't hold up anybody. Therefore, we're going to see how wide our street is supposed to be. I don't think that you get the sense of urgency that this issue is a major problem. It is. I understand we have a problem because of funding, but here's another catch, too. The state's already raised a fuel tax. We ought to be able to get a little more money out of them, we hope, on projects and so forth, which will enhance our situation. And we don't know what Trump and the Fed boys are going to do, but we're all looking at that. So we're, we will be ready to jump right into it next spring if we do exactly like I say. So I would suggest that you, we hold a couple of million dollars back. If we find a grant coming along that we need to utilize that money to match with, we've got it. So that's what I want to see happen in our city. Widen the streets, make them safe for everybody, and the catch is, according to Mr. Camp over here, he's been giving out some bicycles lately and with the club over there, Rotary Club, which is a good thing, but you got to have it to where the kids can ride on the street. And if it's wider, you don't have to worry about the cars hitting them if they stay to the right. So in my little diatribe right now, and finally, I would like to point out a fine fella, Mr. Sean Fennell. Yesterday, he went out to help one of his friends, and, and we want to say this is what we, what we do in Gallatin. We take care of our own. Even though he had three or four trucks marred up to the axles, and the mayor's daddy's tractor was stuck up to the axles on it, we finally got him out, and this is what Gallatin's all about, taking, take care of our friends. So with that, folks, I leave you in peace.
Thank you, Mr. DeBoer. Is there anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda-related items? Okay, seeing none, I'll say public recognition on non-agenda-related items is closed. And before this council adjourns for the evening, I want to ask you, as you leave, to walk over the two displays on the floor and see what you think of it, because your Parks and Recreation Director is going to be bringing your proposal relevant to that very material in the coming weeks, so.
One other thing, I'm sorry. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Mr. McCord for the opportunity to go to Chattanooga Convention that they had up there last week. That's really why I wasn't here last Tuesday, but.
The complete streets.
Yes. I was there with T-Dot and engineers and planners. Seemed like I was out of my league, but I had my partner with me, Pastor Albert Stroller. So thank you, Mr. McCord. Be something good if every council member could attend one of those. Very, very rewarding. So thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you for going. I appreciate that. We all do. Anything else? Okay, need a motion. Motion adjourned by Vice Mayor Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. I hope everyone has a lovely evening, and we'll look forward to seeing you again. Good night.